This is a reorganization meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township, held in Council Chambers, City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Monday, July 1st, 2019, at 7:06 PM. Roll call. Councilman Cooley?
Present.
Councilwoman Easton?
Here.
Councilman Jackson?
Here.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Here.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
And Councilwoman Wooten?
Here.
Also President Joyce Leneira, the City Clerk, Chris Hartwick, the Business Administrator, Gracia Montellus, the City Attorney, Marty Mays, Director of Public Works and Planning, Marlin Towns Legislative Research Officer, and Lisette Sanchez, Record Support Technician. The requirements of NJSA 10:4-9 at sec, the Sunshine Law, has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and published in the Orange Transcript on June 27th, 2019, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, and filed in the office of the City Clerk. This is a reorganization meeting per the Administrative Code, Chapter 4, Article 2, the City Council Annual Election of Officers. Can I get, we need to appoint a temporary chair. Is there a motion to appoint a temporary chair?
Motion.
And the motion is which temporary chair?
Councilwoman Wooten.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cooley?
Yes.
Can the temporary chair please come take the seat? Nomination for Council President.
Madam Clerk, you accept the nominations for Council President?
Yes.
I nominate Carrie Cooley for Council President.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I make a nomination for Councilwoman Easton.
Okay. I like to do this over.
Okay.
Councilman Cooley, who do you nominate?
Myself.
Councilwoman Easton, who do you nominate?
Myself.
Councilman Jackson, who do you nominate?
Carrie Cooley.
Councilwoman Wooten, who do you nominate?
Tennessee Easton.
Councilman Johnson Jr., who do you nominate?
Carrie Cooley.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson, who do you nominate?
Tennessee Easton.
Councilwoman Williams, who do you nominate?
Councilwoman Easton.
That's four nominations for Councilwoman Easton. Can I get a motion to nominate Councilwoman Easton as Council President?
Move.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Wooten. On the motion? Seeing the roll call. Councilman Cooley?
No.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
No.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Congratulations.
That's four yes. Congratulations. Oh, I'm sorry. The nominations for Council Vice President is open. Councilwoman Cooley?
I reckon I nominate Councilman Jackson.
Councilman Jackson?
I nominate Harold Johnson Jr.
Councilman Johnson Jr.
I nominate Chris Jackson.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
I nominate Donna Williams.
Councilwoman Williams?
I nominate myself.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Councilwoman Donna Williams.
Council President Easton?
Councilwoman Donna Williams.
Can I get a motion for Councilwoman Donna Williams as Council Vice President?
Motion.
Motion by?
Motion by?
Summers Johnson.
Summers Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adrian Wooten.
On the motion? Roll call. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
No.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Councilman Cooley?
Yes.
That's six yays, one no. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I skipped over the actual resolution. Council President Resolution was 22-24, and we did the roll call for it. And 224-2019, and the Vice President is 225-2019. Pursuant to Section 4-10 of the Code of the City of Orange Township, each person addressing the council shall step up to the microphone, shall give his or her name and address an audible tone for the record, and unless further time is granted by the presiding officer, shall limit his or her address to five minutes. The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments. Are there any citizens who wish to speak?
Mr. Jeffrey Fell?
Good evening, Council. My name is Jeffrey Fell, local businessman, attorney, MRG, whose local business address is 268 Main Street, Orange, New Jersey. As my custom, I delivered a heads-up memo with some various comments and things. I think the public should know we're in a very strange period of time. In the last two weeks, the United States Supreme Court issued a series of opinions where it talks about political philosophy. But just focusing on the agenda tonight, on the two items. First, I'd like to show that the agenda that we have has been amended to provide for citizens' comments. On the bill list, there's an entry for the Dieter Lurch's firm. Someone can explain what the management services are. And also on the 227, it's about a, almost a half-million-dollar contract. If you could explain the sources of fundings, if the certificate of availability has been signed, and what's the urgency of doing this tonight, and why I can't wait till after the Local Finance Board meets on July 10th to approve this. I hope that some of my questions can be answered because the United States Supreme Court, and the opinions that we had by Justice Alito, who's from New Jersey, talking about viewpoint discrimination being the poison for a free society, and then Justice Alana Kagan's opinion, who was a Harvard former dean of the law school, talking about the importance of where sovereignty derives, and about transparency, accountability, and the adherence of the rule of law. I have my questions. Look at it. Because one thing the public should understand is that on Thursday, the time summaries of the Critchley Law Firm that were from August of 2018, and I had requested in the first week in November 2018, were finally produced to me. I distributed those, that time summaries, to this group. The public needs to look at those time summaries because it tells when the first subpoena came in, in 2018, when it was disclosed to the clerk, that the wide Critchley firm had to look at certain, listen to certain audiotapes. Because one thing that needs to happen is, like this meeting, these videos should be on a public website. Our meetings should be posted. And one question I do have that asks, in calendar year 2019, has this city received additional FBI document subpoenas? I don't want to know what they ask for. I just would like to know if we have the date of the subpoenas and the date they were received by the City Attorney, I mean by the City Clerk. Thank you.
Mr. Ernest Williams?
He said cancel. He said cancel. Cancel. He said cancel.
Okay. May we have a motion to close, citizen?
Council President?
Yes.
Should we do the CBC at this time, or during the public session, or?
Excuse me?
They told me they weren't presenting, so.
No. They're not. Okay.
They're not presenting.
Okay. Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilman Johnson Jr. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. The consent agenda consists of 226 and 227. Are there any items the council wished to remove for a separate vote?
Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Council President, I'd like to have-
Councilman Johnson.
226, 2019, removed from consent agenda.
You have questions, or you want to remove it from the consent agenda?
I want to move for a vote, not on the consent agenda.
He wants a separate vote.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Jackson.
First, congratulations on your return to the Chair. I also wanted to just ask questions on page 10, 11, and 12 of the bill list. And that's just an explanation of some of the terms. On page 10, what is the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust? Could you, somebody explain what that is?
There is a loan fund that's administered by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection called the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust. And it permits municipalities and counties in the state of New Jersey to apply for funds in connection with projects, and has more favorable terms associated with it than if they issued their own bonds. So the road project that you're doing now, for the 38 of those roads, that $10-million application is through the New Jersey Infrastructure Trust.
Okay. Thank you. And what are the NJE? I guess that's what it is. I was looking at the bonds at the bottom. So that's, those are the bonds associated with the trust.
Correct.
All right. And on page 11, at the bottom, the premium on the tax sale. What tax sale does that apply to?
186 Hickory, is that?
At the bottom of page 11?
I think it's 186 Hickory.
It's for 186 Hickory. But I don't know which tax sale.
All right. And I see it's the same on page 12. There's some terms. I see it's related to that actual transaction of 186 Hickory, but I see ATCF 2, New Jersey. What is that? Do you know?
That's prob, that falls under the category, if you look at the top, of third-party tax redemption?
Yes.
That's the third party who held the tax certificate.
Okay. That's all we had on that. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? On the bill list? While we're on that, we just administrative Hartwick, can we get a copy? Or didn't we get a copy of the last houses that was on the tax sale?
The tax sale from 2018?
Yes. That's the last one we had, right?
Right. I mean, I can provide that. Sure.
If nobody else wants, you can just give me a copy.
Okay. It was published, so I know we have it.
Are you removed agenda?
Okay, so just for the record, 226-2019 was amended. And I'm not quite sure which copy y'all have in front of y'all. I'm going to read the title, and if the total equals, then, and I'll tell you what the amendment was. 226-2019. A resolution approving the amended bill list for council meeting vote on July 1st, 2019, dated June 28th, 2019, and approving checks issued by the Finance Department in accordance with ordinance 2-95. Grand total, $3,884,122.98.
Council President? Do we have that?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
Do we have that document?
226, but we have the version that's not amended.
No.
I was just 216.
The amended bill list.
No, all you have is the original bill list, apparently.
All right.
Should we have amended?
You should have it.
Yeah. I'll tell you what the amendment was, or is.
The amendment on the bill list was PO 19-0073, a settlement check for $25,000. On page three is where it is on the new bill list.
But we don't have the new bill.
But you don't have it.
Nope.
And this is a settlement as in the City Attorney's Office, is this our way?
I don't know. I don't have it either.
Who amended it?
This is a settlement that was entered in two years ago, and the payment was due July 1st. For whatever reason, the Finance Office didn't put it on the last agenda. So I added it to this, and had them amend the bill list. Because it has to be paid on July 1st, and we've already received a letter from the attorney.
And what settlement is this?
It was the Eric Data settlement.
And Council President, I did have a question on 227.
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
I did have a question on 227, too. I just, can we vote on them both separately?
We're voting on them separately, so.
Okay. All right.
We need to vote on this one first, and then we'll go to the next one.
Can I get a motion to adopt the bill list as amended?
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Summers Johnson. On the motion?
On the motion?
This is 226.
No, I got you. I just want to, is this the final payment, or there will be more?
One more.
One more payment, and that due date will be?
July 1st of 2020.
Got you. So it's annual. Okay.
On the motion?
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, thank you. Madam Clerk? Could you just give me the amended total for the title? The amended total?
The amended total is $3,884,122.98.
All right, thank you.
Roll call. Councilman Cooley?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Easton?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution 227-2019. A resolution authorizing the award of a contract to Spawn Ranch Inc., 6824 South Cintinella Avenue, Los Angeles, California, 90230, for the Colgate Park Skate Park Construction Phase II under the Sourcewell, formerly NJPA co-op contract, in amount not to exceed $497,069.50. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilman Jackson. On the motion?
Council President Williams. Do we have a finished date, or opening date?
Mr. Mays? This is phase two of the project.
This is the-
So this should be the final phase.
This is the bowl?
Yes.
Marty Mays, Director of Planning and DPW. Yes, this is phase two of the project. Roughly $500,000. It's a combination of funds between CDBG and Green Acres. And basically, this is the final phase, and you asked about a date. That's why we're trying to push it tonight because we want the kids to be able to enjoy it. Right now, the tentative date is November, I'm sorry, September. So we're trying to get it done before then.
September. September, and this is early September, we're hoping.
Yeah, and we hoping before September, actually.
And this will be the bowl, the privacy fencing, and everything.
This is the whole ball of wax.
And bathrooms, and da-da-da-da.
Everything. Shade structure, water fountains.
Well, I say that because we've had discussions about the existence of another building that's on the corner there.
Right.
And we've had some discussions with that owner. So this is everything that was originally planned. We may come back to you for a final in Phase 3 that incorporates an additional piece of property.
But that won't prevent them from-
Correct.
Okay. Actually skating, right. And actually, just thank you for that, Councilwoman Summers Johnson. I believe at the meeting, we have to write up ordinance to stipulate skateboard bike, roller, or skateboard bike, or whatever.
We have to do a rules and safety ordinance
And permitted.
pursuant to the JIF. And they've given us a model.
And permitted uses as well.
Correct.
Okay. So that will be more of a policy and not an ordinance? Or you'll do it as-
It'll be an ordinance.
Okay.
And the only thing you didn't mention, which I want to remind you, is the increased cameras, not only at the skate park, but the entire Colgate Park.
But the cameras, that, it should be up and running, correct?
Cameras are a part of this.
Oh, they're part of it.
Cameras are put into this. So that's the other thing we expanded from the meeting. The cameras and the fencing.
It goes hand-in-hand with the liability.
Got you. And that means somebody could, we could be sitting here, and you could say,
Exactly.
Get off that bench.
Let's go to the table.
Okay.
This is probably going to be the most up-to-date camera system that we have in any park.
So that's cameras and speakers? So you'll be able to speak right from here?
Yep.
Or wherever?
Yes.
From the police department.
Okay.
Mr. Mays, before you leave, I remember at the forum, so there's not going to be any live security there?
I wouldn't say that.
No.
There will be regular patrols, and there's also the conversion of a portion of the field house for a substation.
Okay.
Is that in on the motion? Roll call. Councilman Cooley?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Easton?
Yes.
So at this time, we have a walk-on resolution, but we need to go in recess for five minutes because we couldn't print it out, and we're trying to get it printed out.
Could I have a motion to recess for five minutes?
Move.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes. We will be recessing for five minutes.
Council President? Can we go back to our original seats?
Yeah, but all in favor to the recess?
No one told you to move.
I'm going to give the BA your seat back. I don't like this chair.
I was about to say, because I need elbow to BA. I was getting, about to get upset.
Take my fanny pack.
Give that to Carrie. I think that's it. I think I gave you your, yeah, your thing up there. No, we got you. I don't intend to change. We're going to stay on the mold that you're, I was going to say that earlier. We're going to stay on the mold that you put us in. We're not going to change that.
The stuff to go through your brain.
We're not going backwards. Trust me.
That's fine. That's fine. You don't care? I said, wait, is Carrie still Carrie? It's not the person, it's not the person. Trying to lose, he said no! Did you say no?
I could, I could have doubled you up. You didn't go turkey burger, did you?
Uh, no.
In a minute. Soon she come back up here with, um... You know how to do the write-out thing? With the, um, the driver?
Because with the, um, driveway? Um, wait a minute.
Hey, Council President, are you keeping time? Council President, are you?
She know, she, she keep down. She know I'm a glasses.
I missed a couple minutes.
They had to make more copies, 'cause everybody had a copy except me.
Story of my life.
Everybody has a copy. I did, I just took it, 'cause I need to re, I need to recite.
Councilmembers, while we are waiting to open it up, read the copy that you gave me.
Can I get a motion to reconvene?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilman Johnson, Jr. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So now everybody has, uh, a cop- Um, now that we're back in session, I'm just going to do a, a roll call. Councilman Coley?
Present.
Councilman Jackson?
Here.
Councilman Johnson, Jr.?
Here.
Councilwoman Summers-Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Councilwoman Wooton?
Here.
Council President Easton?
Here.
Uh, new business, a walk-on resolution. Resolution two-two-eight dash twenty nineteen W O is being considered tonight to be walked onto the agenda. The title reads, "Resolution of Need for the Orange Housing Authority by the City of Orange Township City Council." Is there a motion to walk this item on the agenda?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Wooton?
And Summers-Johnson?
On the motion? Roll call, Councilwoman, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson, Jr.?
No.
Councilwoman Summers-Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooton?
Yes.
Council President Easton?
Yes.
Citizens, are there any citizens who wish to speak?
My name is Jeffrey Feld, a local businessman, an attorney, and I'm with G located two-sixty-eight Main Street Orange, New Jersey. I hopefully have been given sufficient time to create a record in opposition to this resolution. One, this is a special, a regular, special meeting. If you knew about this, why this wasn't listed on the agenda as offensive to the community? When we talk about a resolution of need, that's a factual finding that needs to be made. There needs to be establishment, this is discretionary motion. You need to create a record of how many affordable housing units already exist, and how many affordable housing units will be used. At the last meeting, approximately thirty minutes, thirty-five minutes was given to the Housing Authority to make a presentation. They didn't answer certain questions. Has anyone put any in the history about the Housing Authority? Have they made their payments on the cooperation agreement? Because if you looked at their financial statement, it showed that they didn't make their payments. Did anyone ask any questions about Walter G Phase Three? And why there's no payments on the financial statement? And on the monthly operating report? Did anyone ever ask questions about Walter G Phases One, Two, and Three? Because there were only two people, three people in this room that were at the September two thousand nine public hearing when we were talking about the project. One was Councilperson Easton, one was Councilperson Williams, and one was myself. I was the only citizen that spoke. And I had to demand my right to speak as to that. At that time, we were told that the Walter G first three phases, one of the phases is going to be market rate housing. That never occurred. And it's sort of like deja vu tonight, because when you approved Phase Three of Walter G, I stood up, and we had that hearing at one of the local schools. Councilperson Easton was the city council president, and I asked a question about the conflict of interest. You know, about the same law firm representing the city and the redeveloper at the same time. No one answered my questions about it, we had to go through litigation. The appellate division reversed the case, sent it back. Since that time, the State Supreme Court has come down and says, when you have a conflict of interest, the transaction is void. And it's time for us to ask, you know, for all the projects, and we'd never created a record of the Housing Authority or the Orange Housing Development Corporation, how many properties they own? Are, are we getting our monies? Why are we doing this? Because one of the issues that we always gloss over in Walter G Phases One and Two, and the FBI came to visit me about this in two thousand eleven, was how did the city give building permits, a long-term tax exemption, planning board approvals, to a prop, project whose properties owed approximately at one time eight-hundred thousand dollars in water and sewer to the city? As I talked before about some of the decisions by United States Supreme Court, when we talk about, you know, Justice Alito, we're talking about freedom of speech, transparency, accountability, adherence to the rule of law. The public today had no notice, unless they were watching TV and they're going to run down here, that we're going to do this. I mean, at the last meeting, you tried to walk it on, it was defeated because it had to be walked on by the administration. If you knew it was coming on, why wasn't it listed on the agenda? The public needs to know this, because all I see is more additional litigation. What they're going to say is, what is the, where's the support for the need for it? Other than they have a deadline imposed by the HMFA that I had to make it. But the question is, of this sponsor, that being the Housing Authority, are they current in all their obligations to the city? And based on the financial statement and the footnotes in it, as to, as to the cooperation agreement, because that's the Washington Street project, they haven't paid that. Looking to the financial statement and the budget, they didn't make payments on Walter G Phase Three. This is getting crazy. And I don't think the courts want to see my face anymore, but if, if you do adopt this, that's where we're going to be going very shortly. And this is a crazy world we are, live in, where we know this is a discretionary act. They're going to ask you, you're, you're making a finding here of a need for more affordable housing. What's that based on? Where's the background? How many affordable deed-restricted properties we have? These are questions we've asked in the master plan process, and we never got the answers to. And this is such a, coupled with what happened at the planning board on last Wednesday. This is a crazy world we live in today.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time?
I am Dr. Walter D. McNeil, Jr. I'm the executive director of the Housing Authority and president of the Orange Housing Development Corporation. I'm here today to, to thank you all for your support of the project. I think I walked into town in two thousand and three, or thereabouts, and, and one of the things that I discussed, not only with councilpeople at the time, but the board of the Housing Authority, uh, a number of people of the community, I discussed, uh, the problems that we were having with Walter G Alexander. And I'm here today to talk about some of the positive things that have been the result of us demolishing the old Walter G Alexander, because sometimes people don't remember exactly what happened. You know, crime was out of control, we had, uh, emergency services from police to fire to ambulance there almost every single day, sometimes twenty, thirty times a day. And it was public, it was a public outcry for us to do some changing over there. And what I would say to you is that I believe that you did the right thing. Obviously, there's sixty-five cameras over there today, improved lighting. You can walk down Perro, Central Place, and all the connecting streets without having fear of being stopped by somebody who's going to harass you. Uh, you, it's, it's a totally different world, and I think that's the thing that some people don't realize, don't understand, don't want to admit. And Walter G Alexander Four is a continuation of what we're trying to do. We're trying to quiet down the neighborhood. The last time I came up here, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I spoke about some of the challenges that we're going to have to go through with Walter G Alexander Four, and some of the positive results that we're going to, uh, see from, from this. I think the council, the, uh, I think our board, I think, um, the state, New Jersey Housing Mortgage Finance Agency, realizes that. That's why we were approved for One, Two, and Three, and that we've got an excellent opportunity. What's going to happen is, becau- because you approved the resolution tonight, we're going to be able to get financing from the New Jersey Housing Mortgage Finance Agency. We'll get that one more point to be able to provide this type of housing for the much-needed, um, housing needs in this community. And the other thing that I would like to stress, um, as we are doing this, is that there have been market studies. If you could remember, the Housing Authority did a study of four hundred properties in the neighborhood. There were market studies on each development that we did, you should know. Those market studies were done by the very group who did the fiscal impact study. In fact, the same year, they, they did a market study for us and said, how great, uh, this project would be for this community to extend the Walter G, uh, development. So I don't want to take a lot of your time, I just want to thank you. I'm passionate about this issue, um, and I'm passionate because I know we're changing lives. Not only changing lives of the people who live in our developments, but also people who live around. And as we promised as a housing authority, not to just think about our residents, but the residents who live in the community at large. I think we've made an impact, and we'll continue to have that impact, uh, going into the future. Regardless of whether it's a, a forty-four unit development, or some of the smaller homes that we planned on, on building, also to provide services to people in this community. And some will be for sale. And eventually, will be market rate, uh, homes, whatever that can be defined as. I want to thank you again tonight for, um, your attention, uh, to this issue. And if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil.
Motion to close citizen comments?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Williams, and second by Councilman Coley.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution two-two-eight dash twenty nineteen W O. Resolution of need for the Orange Housing Authority by the City of Orange Township City Council. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Williams and Councilwoman Wooton.
On the motion?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Couple of questions. Um, are we walking this on tonight because, um, this will, this needs to be done before we return on the twenty-second?
Yes.
What is the date, um-
July tenth.
July tenth. It's one of the- July tenth, so one of the things that we kept putting off was the prior resolutions, um, rescinding the old, um, uh, the prior ordinances of resolution. What would be the status of that?
If you go forward with this, you'll have to decide what to do with those on the next agenda.
Okay. And, um, and how does, how does this request, if, um, if a tax credit is granted and they are permitted to move forward, how does this project mesh with the master plan?
Business administrator? Do you want to answer that, or?
The project would be consistent with the, um, old master plan as well as the new master plan. Um, the- It would also conform to the redevelopment plan for that area of town. With some minor deviations.
Um, can you speak to Mr. Feld's question about regarding the pilot status?
Regarding which?
The payment, the status of their payment of pilot.
Well, the council has a copy of the audited financials from the Housing Authority. There's a note on page nineteen, um, regarding, uh, outstanding pilot amounts. In which, the accounting firm says that, uh, the Housing Authority is negotiating those outstanding amounts. So according to the financial statements, there are two outstanding pilot amounts. And the mayor and I are unaware of, on any ongoing negotiations.
And to Mr., um, to the Housing Authority?
You want Mr. McNeil to come back up?
Director McNeil, um, you did forecast, and as you were putting out the big plan, Walter G one, two, three, four-
Right.
That, uh, one of the projects would be market rate. Could you speak to the market rate project?
Certainly. One of the things that we talked about is market rate developments would occur. I mean, obviously, we're a housing authority, and we receive HUD funding. None of our dollars necessarily could be used strictly for market rate, um, development. We can do combinations of things, and certainly, we are doing with the small housing program. Part of that is going to be, um, FSS to market rate. We have to gradually go into this. I prefer to have the people who did the market rate, market analysis, talk about the market. You know, I'm an expert with certain things in regard to housing, but as, if you could remember, I talked about the market being ripe for market rate development. That was before Walter G Alexander, the original, was torn down. And there weren't people knocking on the doors to, you know, create new market rate housing in the area. I think you could remember, there was a lady who got up and said, "I want Wall Street lawyers and bankers and everybody else to live on Perro and Central Place." And I, and I said, my response to that is that it takes some time to grow the market so that we could, you know, make it appealing to, to everyone. And I'm still, I'm standing by that right now. There is, there has been interest in the area, but it's still not the interest that we anticipated.
So in your, um, units over there, the units on Oakwood Avenue and the units on Perro Street, can you speak to how many of the units, if you, let's say if you had, on the Perro, on the family side, if you had thirty units, how many are market rate?
Well, I guess that's the interesting term in regard to market rate, because when you get a tax credit, um, offering, what ends up happening is you agree to only charge a certain amount for rent, regardless of whether the people have, um, a Section Eight voucher, or whether, uh, they have some other subsidy. So like, for instance, a, a one-bedroom would only cost about seven to eight hundred dollars. A two-bedroom might be nine hundred to a thousand, dep, uh, in regard to a market rate unit, and then maybe a three-bedroom would be twelve hundred. And the interesting thing, again, I'll go back to the past. When I said, who would be occupying these units? It's workforce housing. We have people who are teachers, nurses, paraprofessionals living in there. When you go down there during the day, you see, there's no cars in the lot, and people talk about parking. And I understand, there is an issue with parking sometimes, um, and I understand there's a reason for that, but our people are out working. And, and I think you know that more so than anybody else. And it's people who live in the community, and who are, um, adding value-added things. They shop in the community, they live in the community, they have cars. Um, at one, at certain parts of the day, all the cars are there, certain parts, all the cars are gone.
Right, but you still could give a breakdown, if there's thirty units, five are families, twenty-five are, can't, that's one- that's what I'm saying, can you give me that?
Well, I have to go back to my notes or the actual facts, because I want to give you the facts in regard to how many people have vouchers. They're all subsidized because we got the tax credit. And as far as market rate, it's hard to say, I mean, because you know what's happening. People are living in substandard housing today in Orange like you would not believe, because there are, in two-bedroom units, I know for a fact, there are two-family, two-bedroom units, there might be two families living in a unit that are paying $1,500 to $2,000. When I talk to landlords, they say, I mean, yeah, there is a rent stabilization board in the community, but these are people who are clearly not following through with some of the rules that we have here.
And so, and that would be the same for your Oakwood, what, Oakwood Avenue?
Oakwood is, remember, we got grants to do Oakwood, and so, one-bedroom. We just rented our one-bedroom out, and it's been stable. Like, we only get changes every now, every two years or so, maybe three. In fact, $756 for a one-bedroom, $800 for a two-bedroom, $900 for a three-bedroom. We can't charge any more than that, because we got grants to do it.
Right, and it's, and you're saying that your turnover is not, the turnover, you don't have a high turnover at the Oakwood?
No, not at all, it's stable. And if you don't mind, the Administrator mentioned something about the note in our audit. And I do want to address that. Obviously, you know, part of our cooperation agreement is that you guys have to review the audit and then send us a bill based on the costs that's associated with the project. But in this particular instance, just know something. There was still, up until a month ago, there was some question in the city's overall mind...
Council President, point of order.
Yes, yes, Councilman Cooley.
Did you time it for the five minutes?
Yes, we're up to 6:36, so, Mr. McNeil, you got two seconds, and we're going to close this out.
Okay, I just want to remind, just bring it to the attention. There was still some questions about whether we had negotiated an agreement in regard to the water bill slash electric bill. You were on the housing authority board at the time. The IG's office came in, basically said to us, "Look, you're paying street lighting that you're not supposed to be paying. You need to go to the city, negotiate the situation." This is back in 2010. And they said, "Don't pay one dime more of your pilot payment until this has worked out." We tried to work it out when Mr. Mason was here. You guys did a resolution, but for some reason...
And we're going to bring you back, because I know...
Let's put this on hold for another night. We need to get out of here tonight.
Okay.
And we thank you for your explanation. So, if we need any additional information, we will call you guys back for a matter of discussion.
Thank you.
Or we'll do it for them, so you can explain it to the public.
That's good.
Okay, but we need to move on.
And Council President, last to the VA. I just want to, are we going to have an opportunity to revisit the styles of housing? Meaning, remember, we had talked about pushback, cars in front? Are we going to be held to the styles from, that was presented to us?
Well, if you go forward with this, you have no requirement in place for them to come back to you and show a modified plan.
Yeah, but isn't that part of the design, and it goes, when it goes through the planning board?
Well, I think you should ask Dr. McNeil that.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, he has to come before the planning board, and then they...
What he's going to sell you is that he's already got approvals.
That's what, that's my, Council President, that's my...
Well, let's leave that on another time, let's just move on tonight. We will address that, trust me, we definitely will address it. Right now, we need to go to a vote.
Well, Council President?
Yes, Councilman Jackson.
In looking at the text of this resolution, it says, "We are determining there is a need." And are we determining the need based on studies that were done years ago or a recent study? Because I...
Director McNeil, you want to answer that in two seconds?
In two seconds, yes. Of course, there's a requirement for a market study to be done. And in the market study, it clearly says that there's a need. I know there was a fiscal impact study that was done by the same company that said that it would cost a little bit more, or $24,000, but you have to really evaluate that market study that was done by the same, that impact, fiscal impact study that was done by the same company. Because you have one arm saying, "Of course, there's a need for this type of housing in town, and it would help to settle things down in terms of, further settle things down in terms of crime and the disproportionate amount of affordable workforce housing that's around."
When was that study done, Mr.?
That was done last year, well, 2017, I'm sorry. It was done when this was originally considered.
You mean the fiscal impact statement?
And it's...
Excuse me?
Do you mean the fiscal impact statement?
Yes.
Our study by value research was done in 2017.
2017.
The other study that he's talking about, I don't know what...
It was done two weeks earlier.
And...
Yes, April of 2017, it was.
So, what we're saying is that the need hasn't changed since 2017, that's what we're saying, right?
I'm telling you, my, based on my professional opinion, you know, I'm there all the time, and I see. It's empirical evidence that the need has not changed that much, it hasn't. And we have to do another study, which is happening right now, in order to submit to the New Jersey Housing Mortgage Finance Agency the application, another market study, which I am obligated to share with you.
And talk apples and oranges, Madam President.
And we're not going to get to the bottom of that tonight. But Director McNeil, in the future, as Councilwoman Williams requests it, I know you already have site approval, but we're going to ask that you come back before us to present that so we can talk about some of the concerns, okay?
That's fine.
So, that's going to be a requirement, okay?
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Council President, still in the motion. What is the administration position on this particular walk on resolution?
The mayor told me to put it on the agenda. He had a meeting with the housing authority, I believe, at the beginning of last week.
Yes.
And he made a commitment that it would be on the agenda.
Councilman Cooley, you know the meeting that you requested it?
Yes.
It did happen, but it happened with a mediator who came back with the recommendation.
Okay.
All right?
Council President, if you're going to put a requirement for a presentation, you need to put that in the record.
I did.
No, you need to put it in the paper record.
Oh, I will, I will draft the memo.
No, Council President, can we amend the resolution to add a whereas?
Oh, you wouldn't just add it to this resolution?
Yes.
City Attorney, can we do that?
Yes.
Can y'all, so whereas upon, just one sec, because I, so, let's get the thought up there before you speak to it. Because I, whereas upon approval, upon state approval, that they have to come back before the city council to review site plan and to do a form.
The city attorney is going to draft the verbiage.
That's fine, I don't have, I don't have an issue with the language I say, but I'll draft it in here, I'll amend it accordingly.
So, can you add it on real quick and tell us what it is?
Sure. So, right underneath the, right before the "now therefore be it resolved" will add a new whereas clause. And it shall read as follows. Whereas, point of order, Council President, there's been at least four interruptions from the same person in the audience. I would ask that that stop.
Mr. Fell, we're going to ask that you stop talking. We're going to ask that you stop talking. Very courteous, very courteous requirement, that you stop talking, okay?
Whereas upon approval...
State approval.
By the state. The city council of the City of Orange Township shall direct, I'm writing as I speak, I'm sorry for the delay, shall direct the proper authorities to appear with respect to
Site approval and, and community form.
Right, site approvals and community forms. And that'll be a period after that.
We good?
All right. She's going to read the amendment into the record.
Okay. There's now a third whereas clause. Whereas upon approval of the state of New Jersey, the city council of the City of Orange Township shall direct the proper authorities to appear and discuss the recommendation previously outlined with respect to the site approval and community form, period.
Does that capture?
You need to add that to the whereas, the now therefore clause, so it would need to be number three.
So, it's going to appear twice?
Yep.
Number three after... So, you're being...
It's going to appear one time. You add the whereas clause, but then after the now therefore, you have to add the same thing.
Okay.
So, it'll also be the third point under the noun therefore?
Correct.
Pause. It just starts with the city council?
Correct. Yeah, so it'll start with the city council.
So, the third point will say, "The city council of the City of Orange Township shall direct the proper authorities to appear and discuss the recommendation previously outlined with respect to site approval and community form." Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Woodin?
Yes. On the motion?
We were on the motion.
On the motion?
We were on the motion.
It's amended now.
Oh, okay.
On the motion?
Yes, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. In making a determination based on a need that was supported by facts accumulated in 2017, I just don't feel that I have enough to move forward at this point. And I just think that part of our due diligence requires that we have facts in order to make a determination based on a need. To say that the need is the same, or it says that the housing authority had no impact, and I don't want to agree with that, or the impact was so small that the need not be reviewed again. And I think in the best interest of Orange, we need to clarify what the need is in order to move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Roll call.
Council, I'm sorry, I was on a motion. Council President, the attorney from the housing authority has raised her hand. And I just wanted to know if you wanted to...
Do you really need to add anything, because we are voting right now?
Actually, regarding the format of the resolution, and again, for the record, Marsha Moore from the Law Forum, a post-pilot on behalf of the authority, in discussing this with HMFA regarding the specific resolution, this resolution is the format required by HMFA. The Orange Housing Authority is not objecting to coming back to discuss the site plan, but it's my understanding with discussing them that this resolution, that format cannot be modified. Again, if we could do it in a separate, we're not, we're conceding that we will return, but the form of resolution is specifically what is required by HMFA, and they have very strict guidelines on any modification to their resolution. So, I just wanted to put that on the record. Again, we are able to return and discuss the site plan approvals, which has been extended by the planning board, so our approvals have been extended. That was previously granted.
So, you're saying if we modify the resolution, the whole thing will probably, you will not get the money?
It will be mute because we cannot modify their form of resolution. We spoke to MHFA, and there would be no modification to their strict form of resolution that we have provided to them.
Is that a statute, state statute, or does somebody just pick up something up as they go along?
Yes, Councilwoman Jameson.
See, now, that puts a hole, like, now I don't feel comfortable at all, because if that's the case, then that should have been in writing, letting us know that it couldn't be changed. Because I felt comfortable with the way that we just changed it, because I didn't want anything to go forward without the community having an input. You know what I mean, I don't feel it right there.
Why don't we...
We'll let it go, then we'll...
Let it go, let's do it the way we started.
Okay.
And we pray that you get approved.
Okay.
If not, there's always tomorrow.
All right, thank you so much.
All right.
Roll call, Councilman Cooley?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Council President, I'm sorry, point of order, we're doing as amended.
As amended.
We're doing it as amended. As amended.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Johnson Jr.?
No.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Woodin?
Yes.
Council President Easton?
Yes.
That would be five ayes, two noes, motion pass. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Could I just make a comment before we adjourn?
Mine too.
First, before we adjourn tonight, I just want to thank Council President Cooley for his leadership and direction, and for making an impact on us as a council and bringing us to all together, and for having the patience to deal with us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership. And I am praying and hopefully that we will keep that momentum going. We will not go backwards, we will continue in the vein that we're already in, because we are becoming a council that works together. And I hope that we all agree that we will stay on that path, a positive path, and grow together. The other thing I want to say too, and as we move forward as a council, one of the things I want us all to embrace, or try to embrace, is that the housing authority and the Board of Education are partners. We need to treat them as a partnership, not be adversarial, and let's try all work together for the betterment of this community, because they are part of it, the Board of Education is a part. So, in my future endeavors, I intend to meet with both of them quite frequently to make sure we're all on board, that we're working together. We need to build a team in this city, and we need to show the residents that we're all working together for the good of the city.
Council President?
Thank you so much, and thank you again, Councilman Cooley.
Council President, don't leave out the library.
And the library. We need to include the Board of Ed, the housing authority, and the library, because they all are separate entities, but we all need to work together as a team as we move the city forward. Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, and in closing, I would like to also congratulate you on returning to the seat as council president, and I thank everybody that voted for me for council vice president, Councilman Cooley. Thank you for your leadership for the last two terms as council president, and we look forward to working together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations to you two.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
As, I'm sorry, just as a reminder, July 22nd, not July 22nd is the return date.
Monday, July 22nd is the next meeting. Motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by, who did the second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Summers Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned, 8:15 PM.